Oh, well.
Nobody showed up.
Guess I don't have another fan?
I think more people are here because they're individual.
Ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for coming. There are copies of the agenda here for you if you would like one. At this time, I'd like to call the March 5th, 2013 Planning Board meeting to order. The first item on the agenda are minutes of February 12th and February 19th. Mr. Secretary.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move the minutes of February 12th as revised and the 19th as printed.
Have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, or approvals not required. Mr. Curry?
Oh, there are none tonight.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a continuation of a public hearing. Mammoth Acquisition LLC.
I have a letter from the attorney for the applicant.
This letter is dated February 26th, and it's addressed to Ralph Herbst's Chairman Planning Board, referencing the proposed CVS and Cooperative Bank of Cape Cod, Worcester Court, and Davis Straits Falmouth Special Permit and Site Plan Review Applications. Dear Mr. Herbst, this letter is to request a continuance of the hearing before the Planning Board on the above referenced matter from March 5th, 2013 to March 12th. The applicant requires additional time to finalize site detailed changes after consultation with the Planning Board staff. Thank you sincerely, Laura M. Moynihan. So, for those of you in the audience who are here for the hearing, it will be continued. It will not be heard, there will not be any information exchanged tonight, and it will be continued until next week at 7:00 in this room. So if you choose to...
We need a motion.
Right. But if you choose to leave after we move on to the next agenda item, feel free to do so. So I'll entertain a motion to continue the hearing for LLC.
I move that we continue the hearing for Mammoth Acquisition LLC per their request to March 12th, same time, same place.
7:00.
Second. 7:00.
Sorry.
Same best.
Second. Okay. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is discussion by the Planning Board for zoning articles for the upcoming two Springtown meetings. One is the annual meeting, and the other is a special meeting. We will take them in order as on the agenda. The first item for the, the first thing we will do is the annual Springtown meeting. And the first item on the, the first, I'm sorry, article to be discussed tonight is the wind turbine, wind energy systems. Sorry, I have to shuffle my papers here for a moment. So, I now open the, the discussion amongst ourselves about the wind energy system bylaw, which we are, we have modified and had a hearing on and are proposing for town meeting. I went through it myself today, and I can make a few comments that we can discuss, and then if I, if there's something in that article, in that portion of the article and the wind turbine bylaw, then you can chime in. I'd just like to take it right through, go right through the article. First, under purpose, there was, there were comments during one of our hearings to add municipal, county, state, and federal entities after the word "businesses." Is there any comments or any discussion about whether or not you'd want to incorporate a change such as that? And let me review that we do have time to make changes to this prior to submission to, to the, to the selectmen so that the, that they would be printed as such rather than, rather than having to make amendment on town meeting floor. So, is there any comments on that? Yes, Doug?
Could you tell me which section that is in?
I'm going right down from the beginning. 240, 166A, purpose.
Okay.
Right after the word in the second line, "businesses," there was a suggestion that we add municipal, county, state, and federal entities.
I'm not opposed to that because that was the intent, that it would be all inclusive.
My memory is not as great as other people sitting at this table. I don't know whether we discussed that previously or not. And if we did, maybe Mr. Curry, if you think we've done something, if we're being redundant on any of these, would you chime in, please?
Uh, I'm sorry.
No, what I mean by is if I mention something here, have we mentioned that we've discussed previously?
Purpose?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Purpose, continue.
Right, okay. So are there any, you're not opposed to that? Is there anybody else? Everybody has their own minutes and so forth from the hearings, so do you have, any further comment on that, Pat?
Well, if we're going to add something like that, perhaps we ought to do residents, karma, businesses, and governmental entities. For sure.
Okay. Residents, residences, businesses...
Residents, karma, businesses, and governmental.
Governmental, governmental entities.
That is if we're going to do it.
Yeah, if we're going to do it, right, okay. So, any more discussion, Mr. Curry?
Okay, you would prefer...
Okay. Yes, Brian?
Okay, so we could say, we could say local and, local and state.
Okay, so I think we discussed this before, and I think that's why we...
If you want to include municipal, it's fine. If you can't, if you include federal and state, we can say...
Right, okay. Another, so we could say residents, businesses, and municipal bodies. Governmental bodies. Okay, I need further discussion on that. Jim?
I actually want to bring up something I should have brought up before you started. I'm sorry, I forgot about it. And this is only, this is for our discussion. I've had some rethinking of things about what's going on. I've been talking to a lot of people. And I just wonder what you thought about, I've talked to a lot of people, and there's a lot of confusion that's been brought on by what goes on at town meeting and what our bylaw is. And it might be simpler, and this is going to hurt to say this, but just to postpone this and just go for the no wind turbine at all bylaw and make it really clear, and then bring this up forward, because most people are getting the two issues confused drastically about what we're doing, one or the other, and it...
Well, tonight, we are going to discuss the no wind turbine...
Okay, maybe I should have brought up at that time.
For, under the special, under the special meeting on our agenda.
Right.
So I'd rather stick with this now, for now.
Okay, I'm fine. I just let you know what I was thinking about.
Okay. Other comments on whether or not we want to include municipal governmental bodies?
Brian had made a point that municipal, say, governmental bodies.
So tell me what the wording is that you would recommend.
Well, he's saying that thereby right, or whatever the explanation was.
Just use municipal.
Rather than government.
You can't compel a state or federal agency to comply.
That's what I said, municipal, municipal governmental bodies. Municipal governmental bodies.
Okay.
Is that good?
Yep.
Okay. Further comments on that? Because I want to vote on these as we go through them, okay? If you want to do these changes. And these are only the changes that I gleaned from, from our hearings and so forth. You all might have additional ones. So as we move from one section of the bylaw to the next, then let's make sure that you get it, get your comments in, okay? Yes, Pat?
If we do not add that in, does the wording prohibit municipal governmental entities from constructing wind turbines? If we do not add that clause in, is it limited by residents and businesses? So we don't have to add it in, and municipal entities can?
I think elsewhere in the zoning bylaws, somewhere in here, we have a, you know, permit can issue unless it comes to you, no matter what. But it doesn't hurt to be clearer in the purpose section by adding the word municipal. It's...
Yeah, I, well...
I'm not objecting, I just wanted to know if...
I think, I think it would, I think it would make it clearer, too. But I need, I need any more comments, and other than that, I want to, we're going to vote on whether or not we're going to add, we're going to drop the word "and," so it's going to read, supplement the power used by residences, residents, businesses, and municipal governmental bodies. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I need a motion, then.
I move, we accept your change.
I need a second.
Second.
Second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstain, okay. All right. Anything else under purpose? Okay, we go to wind energy systems allowed with limitations. I didn't have any under that particular paragraph. Anybody else? Wind energy systems prohibited. Anybody else have anything on that? No. Okay. Exceptions. We had a suggestion to add the word "lawfully" after "wind energy system," so it would read, any wind energy system lawfully in existence as of the effective date of this article shall be construed, considered conforming, and may apply for a special permit under this article to alter, modify, relocate, or otherwise make improvements consistent with Article 34. All right, no? Okay. Comments? Doug?
I'm in agreement with adding that one word.
He's in agreement with adding that word, "lawfully."
I'm comfortable adding it because I'm not sure what it does. That introduces another level of uncertainty in this because you have to determine if something's legal before you apply the bylaw. I'm not sure how that's going to work. So I think it just complicates the issue.
To me, it just means it was done under the guidelines that were in existence, you know? It was permitted, it wasn't just put up. Because what if there's one up somewhere in town that we didn't, never know, know that it was there, find out later it was put up without a permit, but we're grandfathering it in now.
Just for the floor's clarification, the pre-existing non-conforming, you have to have it legally commenced. So if you want to add term to this, just reinforces the fact that, you know, this is not an amnesty section, this is a pre-existing non-conforming section. So it doesn't...
Okay.
I'm not sure we haven't missed any of these things.
It doesn't hurt.
Yeah, it's not likely, but just to say.
My, my only question is, is that, is that there is a, there is currently litigation out there, and whether or not it's going to...
We've done a fine job of keeping out of it. If you want to use, if you want to make clear that it's, if you're made non-conforming in this bylaw, we want to consider you conforming. The purpose of the board, as I recall, did this. If you want them all to come back to you, you don't want you to go into the Board of Appeals under the pre-existing non-conforming statute, which is a much easier test, substantially more detrimental. You want this to come back to you, and that's why that section is there. It doesn't hurt if you want to make, clarify that it's not an amnesty, it's a pre-existing non-conforming situation, but you have to be legally in existence, whether you have a permit or not. There might be ones out there that don't, and who knows?
Okay, I have one other comment on that paragraph, and that is to say that, I don't like, I don't like referencing the ones that are in existence right now, but this, this paragraph talks about those that are in existence right now. And it says that you need a special permit to relocate them, but that assumes relocating them within the Falmouth confines of Falmouth, and it does not talk about dismantling them and moving them somewhere else. So I guess I'm okay with that. You assume that relocation is within the town.
You may want to relocate it on your own lot. You may have a situation where you have a turbine on, that's going to prove in Tech Park, that's very close to a lot line, but we want to move it. You obviously have jurisdiction then to do that.
Right.
If someone wants to relocate it in Damasby, well, Damasby, plus, we'll have the heartburn on that.
Okay, so I'm, I'm fine with that. Okay, so let's go back then to adding the word, considering adding the word "lawfully" after wind energy systems. Any other comments? If not, then I need a motion to, if, does anybody want to make a positive motion to do that?
I move that we add the word "lawfully" to the first sentence so that it reads, "Any WES lawfully in existence as of the effective date."
You have a second?
Yes.
Second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Motion carries. Any other, any other comments on exceptions? Okay, the next, the next, the next paragraph is definitions. Any, any comments about definitions? I recall someone wanting the, an additional definition in there for party of interest. Is that, is that, is that commonly understood?
It's defined in Section 9 of 48. It's defined in the state law.
It's defined in the state law, okay. So, I know it's defined in the state law, would it make any, okay, I guess, okay, I'll forget it, I'll leave it at that. Any, anybody else? Any comments on definitions? Okay, thanks for reminding us of that, Brian. I think we did discuss that previously also, but I'm sorry, my memory just can't retain it all.
In that way, if the change, the state law changes, you don't have to go messing with the local bylaw.
Right, okay. The next paragraph is application requirements. Any opposed changes to that? Hearing none? I'm sorry. That's, that's two pages worth, and on the second page, I did have something under 5B. The last sentence of the initial paragraph where it says, "including along the property lines," and I had written in there, "of a Butters," to be added, and I don't remember if we, yeah, Pat, did we discuss that?
John Ford brought that up, and when, the discussion, when we had the discussion, and he understood that actually the way it stated is stricter than what he was thinking of, then he was okay with the way we stated it.
Okay, then I'll drop that, then, unless somebody else wants to discuss that more. Okay. And then, there was also something, there was also a request for C-weighted analysis to be included. Under 5B, it would be number five, would have to be added. Does anybody have anything to say about that? Yes, Doug?
Well, I recall that our thinking was that because we've kept the size of these down to under 250 kilowatt, the infrasound and the vibrations and that C-weighted scale will not likely come into play. I don't know if we really 100% vetted that, that that was maybe...
Okay. Thank you for...
Maybe we just assumed it, and I hope that we're right.
Okay, I think I do recall that now. Pat?
There, we can cover anything we want to as well, because if you look at the lower Roman numeral four, it says, "Sound modeling shall include analysis of, but not be limited to..."
Limited to, okay.
"...the following items." And intermittent sound is in there, and all kinds of other components of sound.
Okay.
But we're not limited to those, so we could require that.
Okay.
And the only, well, we haven't made mention, we've mentioned of a lot of different types of things that we can require, but we haven't required any C-weighted scale, or, I mean, do you think really that we have the right to ask for that, even though it's not listed?
Yep, because it says, "not limited to."
Okay.
Yeah.
So we could ask for anything in relationship to sound. There's a lot of research that is being done right now. I would be very hesitant to even guess what might come of that research. I would not want to be limited in any way, and this does not limit us to whatever might be found out that we can then require.
Okay, so if later on, when we're going through a process, and we say, we better do some more studying and realize that there may be some infrasound, and there may be some more measurement required, we can just ask for it?
Any other comments? Mr. Curry?
Just for the board's discussion purposes, we also provided a fail-safe under first paragraph in Section F. Applications for a special permit to determine compliance shall include all such materials that may be reasonably required by you. So if you need to show a nexus, a reasonable relationship to what you're doing, thank you.
Thank you. Yep, okay. All right, if there, I hear no further discussion on, on, come on here, on application requirements, we then go to paragraph...
Well, I do have one more thing. If we're in the number five, the operating details, is that, that's included in this, right?
Yes.
So we discussed the sound impact analysis, is this where we're going to discuss the modeling and the, you know, the modeling that'll be used, or is that later on?
That's, that's under criteria review, which is the next, two more paragraphs.
Okay.
So, procedure for review, G. Does anyone have any comments on that? I don't believe we heard anything about that from, in our public hearings. Now, H, criteria for review, I believe this is where you, what you are referring to, Doug?
Right.
And in setbacks, or, 2B, setbacks, there was testimony to reduce the levels from eight to six or less. That would be criteria for review, number 2B, and it currently reads, "shall be determined by the special permit granting authority from sound impact analysis described above in order not to exceed increases in broadband sound levels," excuse me, "by more than eight A-weighted decibels or pure tone sounds, or pure tone sound levels by, by more than three A-weighted decibels over the ambient sound levels at the property line." Now, as I recall, there was testimony that, that the models that are used to estimate these can be inaccurate, and so that was the reason why the testimony was presented to us, that we might consider reducing the, the eight weighted decibels, recalling that, I believe, 10 is the state requirement. So we had already lowered it from 10 to eight once, I believe. Any comments or discussion on that? Doug?
Well, I felt that was pretty compelling information, and I'm inclined to agree with the six. Is this the specific location where we're referring to the modeling to be used in this 2B? I mean, it doesn't really describe modeling. I'm wondering if this is describing...
Well, it says, it says, "from sound impact analysis described above," and...
So I'm, I'm just not 100% clear if, whether or not we're saying that... that this is what they shall not exceed. And then, that's why I was curious if it maybe should have been included in the application requirement, because that seems like we're, we're directing them how to do the modeling, if we are. I mean, I don't even know if we are able to direct them.
Well, you, I mean, that, I'm guessing that that's how these things are determined in the first place, is that they, they will reference a model because they're not going to construct it and then measure it, because they're, they're applying to us to construct it. So they have to justify their, their, their data by some, by some means.
No, absolutely.
And so I'm, I'm guessing that, that this is where the modeling is, is applied.
In the first part?
In setbacks, where we are now.
Okay.
Because, I mean, that's, that's the way I read it. Anyway, that, that's the way I read it. Pat?
The way this is written, I do believe that this is the appropriate place for that. The other thing, too, is that I completely concur that it should be brought back to six. I was kind of wanting that to begin with, because the models are, the degree of inaccuracy in the models, they're all over the place. And if we have it at eight, we're almost guaranteed to have exceeds. And that's from some of the reading I've done as well. So I concur that we should bring it back to six.
Paul, comments?
There is no basis for eight, and there's certainly no basis for six. It appears to be just a gut feeling that since there's some variation in the model, we should lower it. I think we've done that, but there's no reason to go to six. There's no message that we, I've seen anywhere that six is an appropriate number. I think we've taken into consideration concerns of people and lowered it to eight, which is below the state requirement. And I'd be in favor of leaving it at, at eight, because there's no logical reason to go lower.
Jim?
I believe we heard testimony just last time that the modeling was set, they missed it by, by 20%. And it was documented by the state. So I, I kind of disagree with Paul. I think there is reason to do it, and it was presented at our last meeting with a graph showing it clearly that they modeled one thing and they achieved another, was I believe is a 20% error. I was taken back by that, so I think it should be adjusted to be more prudent.
Doug, for that comment?
No, no more comment. I'm in agreement, and I think I would make a motion that we adopt the six A weighted decibels rather than the eight.
You have a motion to change the broadband sound levels by more than eight to, by more than six A weighted decibels?
Yes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
And I opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one. Further comments from subsequent to our hearings and, and public input on criteria for review? Section H, section I, decision. Any comments on decision? J, categorical design, uh, categorical denial, excuse me. Hearing none? K, standard conditions? Which is the final paragraph. Yes, oh, Doug, excuse me.
I didn't take good notes about it, but somebody had a concern about maintenance. Robbie Laird, something about.
Maintenance?
Sorry, I didn't write down better note. Did anybody else have a better note about what that, his concern was about the maintenance?
Maintenance shall include but not limited to painting, structural repairs. It says that that would be under paragraph one. The applicant shall maintain the wind energy system in good condition. And then there's A, B, and C. Anybody have any notes or anything about comments on that? I, I don't, I didn't have any, Doug, that I recall. Let's see. Pat?
If my memory, if I'm dredging this back from my memory, I believe what he said is that we nowhere say how often we want to have a full maintenance review of the system. In other words, it should be, it should have maintenance from top to bottom. I think he was suggesting once a year to check everything out.
Oh, I think you're right.
Yeah, and we don't say that anywhere in here. We don't put a yearly requirement, yes.
But could we condition that in a, in a, in a special permit and say, the, the applicant will, will comply with the manufacturer's recommendations? And so if, I can't imagine that a, that a manufacturer wouldn't recommend an annual review of that, but I mean, I don't know whether they would or not, but we could at least cover it that way.
And should they have maintenance records be kept that we can review?
We could put that in the conditions too, but I'm guessing, I don't know.
It's true, if they don't keep up the maintenance, they're going to start getting noisy and operating poorly.
Yeah. Yes, Mr. Curry?
For this discussion, you do have an annual inspection, it looks like, there in your, on paragraph two. I'm not sure you can command as a special permit condition proprietary information, but you can ask for that annual inspection, and obviously that ties into your maintenance issue.
Yeah. Okay. Are you, are you happy then, Doug, with that?
I guess so.
To cover it that way?
As long as they have some records of maintenance and who's doing the maintenance. We'd like to know. I mean, I don't know what kind of inspection it's going to be. Who would do an inspection?
On, of somebody, they'd have to have.
Building commissioner?
Well, that, or they'd have to hire, hire a company to do it, I suppose.
Look under paragraph two, the inspections are conducted by registered engineer.
Formed by professional engineers.
My sense is it's something you probably cover, part of your special permit decision somewhere. As long as it's structured properly, that you can have any proprietary.
And it also says a report, Doug, which would be a record.
Maintenance record.
Maintenance record, yeah.
Okay.
I think we covered that.
All right.
Okay. Anything else on the standard conditions? And then we have the very last sentence. Or do or take any other action on this matter on request of the planning board. That's us. Okay, Brian, do we need a, we voted on the individual changes. Do we need to vote anything else for the town meeting?
Why don't you take a motion, make a motion to print it as, or to make your recommendation, to make the motion as recommended, because it can't be as printed in the warrant.
Because it was, it was already printed?
Yeah, so now it's as recommended.
Okay.
You're making recommended changes.
And we will, we will, we will refer to those recommended changes on planning, on town meeting floor?
Hopefully, with any amount of luck, it goes on the blanket. But if it's held and a motion must be made, if the motion by the chairman would be as recommended.
Okay.
Because the warrant's been printed, it's been published.
Right.
Warrant booklets that go out.
Won't have these changes.
It will have these changes.
Will have these changes.
Will have these changes. Be the original motion, the original article. And then it'll be this, it should be the motion. Remember, the article just announces and prepares a town meeting, there's a test of what is going to be discussed.
Right, yeah.
The motion is what's involved.
Okay.
Your motion will be as recommended.
Okay. Right, okay. All right, so then I, that's what I need to motion for. Jim?
Before we go on, I believe if I don't bring up my point now, I, it'll be too late. So I just want to bring it up. Okay, because if, if we've already moved it, because I'm not going, okay.
Correct, correct.
So this is the only opportunity I'm going to get to say this.
Point where you should make your, your discussion.
Okay, and this is for discussion. I just feel that there's a tremendous amount of confusion. Everybody bundles the wind turbine things all together. When you talk to the public, when I talk to everybody, most people, and I'm not, and I, and actually, I know that the town meetings don't understand it, because last time I saw many people get up and say things, and they were combining the two issues as well. I think this, I think the town has a really big challenge on, on dealing with our existing turbines. And I think our bylaw is getting confused with that. And I was just thinking, what about if we just simplified it? And just put this on hold, put in no wind turbines, and let the selectmen deal with their issue? And then bring this back once it's done. I know we've worked on it for years, but there's a tremendous amount of confusion in the town. And I can't seem to get it straight when I talk to people. I just wonder what you guys thought about that. I'm with all you, I'm not going to vote against it. I just thought, had to bring this point up, because I find it, I'm not confused, but most people I talk to have, they blend the wind turbines all into one thing, and that's the issue. And I just thought we should discuss it now and make our plans going forward. I had to bring that up.
Okay, discussion. Doug?
We're all getting tired of talking about wind turbines, but I think we should keep going and try to push this through, because even though people may be confused, I think if they spend a little bit of time and think about it, they'll figure it out.
Pat?
I also think we have the precinct meetings where we can make it very clear, if we possibly can. And with the bylaw presentation to town meeting, I'll work with Brian on that to see how we might be able to further clarify it to town meeting members.
Paul?
Precinct meetings, I agree with that. Fortunately, not everyone attends the precinct meetings, but the people who do attend are generally very engaged in what's going on. And the last time, when the issues came up about the precinct meetings, it did not come up with precinct meetings, and Mrs. Sousa came back the second night and clarified that. That's, to me, the purpose of the precinct meetings, to bring those things up. That did not happen that time, but perhaps if we attend the precinct meetings, we can make that clarification. So I think that's the way to move forward.
Okay, my comments on that would be that I agree that we need to move. Town meeting members have a lot of opportunity to understand the differences. The first opportunity would be to attend some of our previous meetings or to watch our meeting tonight on FCTV. We also have very good coverage in the printed press, which can elaborate the fact that our wind turbine bylaw is not a part of the articles that deal with the wind turbines that are currently in place. And we have the precinct meetings. And then we have any discussion that we might have, might need to do on town meeting floor. So there's four, four opportunities for town meeting members to educate themselves. And I feel as though if they have those opportunities, that they should be comfortable in discerning the differences between them and make, make their own choices as to how they want to vote. So I, I would, I would agree that we continue and, and move this bylaw and this article forward. So, if there's no further discussion, then I will entertain the motion suggested by Mr. Curry that we move that our article on wind turbine systems be recommended as, I mean, as be moved as recommended. Chairman will move the article as recommended? I need a second.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Aye, opposed, abstained. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on the, on the annual town meeting is Ten County Road zoning change. That was proposed by Attorney Amet in representing, or representing, I kind of forgotten now, it's the, it's the owner of of that, of that particular building, and I don't, I don't have it in front of me. I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have that. I don't have a copy of that. Do you have a copy of that article? Thank you, I, I don't know why I don't have this.
It's in your packet somewhere.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay, my apologies. Thank you. So that was the article, this is the article to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning to allow, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning of the, on the, on that particular map so as to extend the existing B three district by rezoning from residential B to business three on the land at Ten County Road in North Falmouth, which is, which land is on a certain assessor's parcel. And that was the piece of property that was adjacent to the bike path, and it's located on extension of 151, which is then called County, County Road, I believe. So, we heard the presentation for the, to rezone that particular parcel from Attorney Amet. Are there any comments or questions, discussions on that particular article? Jim?
Just a discussion. I mean, in the past, we talked about, and it didn't get proved, but business redevelopment on, on this. That was kind of one of the things we were thinking about, our, you know, our little village centers. And I think if we do this, that thought is probably going to go by the wayside. So I just wanted to discuss it, see what other people thought. I'm not holding on one way or the other. I just wanted to have a discussion on it, because I, I think that in our planning, that's kind of the vision we have, is to use that if we can for the vision, unless we've changed our mind collectively. I didn't know, I just want to hear from the rest of you what your thoughts are.
Doug?
I don't think this lot was really originally included in that proposal that we had done before. It was two adjacent lots and across the street.
That's true. It was, didn't include this lot, but it was, it abutted this.
It was in the area.
This particular, yeah, it was in that little, in that North Village, North Falmouth Village area.
I agree with you that that was our plan and vision, and could still potentially be at some time, we'd come back with that. But business three is more restrictive, and that's all they really need, so. I'm not, I'm not opposed.
Sorry.
I drove, I drove up to look at the site last week, and this is not contingent with the rest of the areas that we've discussed about in the past. It's a little down County Road a bit. So I don't see making this change impacting that vision for that entire area. I think that needs to go forward at some point in time. But I don't think this particular parcel would impact that in any way.
Pat?
Well, I didn't hear any of the North Falmouth residents coming out and opposing this. And they were quite vocal when we tried to do the other changing. And they are always quite vocal when we try to do things in North Falmouth, they come out. To me, that says they have no objection to this change.
Unless they don't know about it.
No, I just brought it up for discussion.
Well, the Butters would have been notified, and that would have gotten around, believe me. I can't, I can't imagine that they wouldn't be aware of it. Jim, I'm sorry?
No, I'm all set. I just wanted to bring a point up.
Any further discussion on this, then? Then we would vote to, we need a motion to vote and to vote and recommend this as printed.
I move that we vote to recommend this as printed to town meeting.
This article, the article, there's no number on it now, but I mean, it's, it's somewhere in there. I don't know what the article number is. Maybe Mr. Amet knows what the article number is. Mr. Amet does not know the article number.
Okay, okay, we know what we're talking about.
All right, so, so that's the article two. All right, so, so that's the article to rezone the property located at?
10 County?
10 County Road. Okay, I had a motion, could I have a motion in a second?
Second.
A second, okay, further discussion then? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained. That motion carries. We'll now move on to the.
Special.
Special town meeting. The first item on the special town meeting is the windmill prohibition article, which is our article again, and we had heard some, we have received some correspondence and did hear, hear some testimony about that, and I'm looking for it. I had it out here somewhere. There it is. This is the article to prohibit windmills, which is the current bylaw. And this is our fallback article, should the article in the annual town meeting on wind energy systems be defeated. So I will listen to comments or discussion on the windmill prohibition, noting that we have reached the limit of, of the moratorium, and we could not extend the moratorium any further.
Discussion.
Yes, Doug?
Are we going to be likely to have our regular wind turbine bylaw discussion on the first night?
Oh, yeah.
In the front part?
We'll make sure.
Okay. That was my only question.
Because if the annual meeting goes beyond 11 o'clock that night, they then start the special the next day and then go back to annual meeting, which is something I never understood. I guess it's because they have to post a date for the, yeah, that's why. Further discussion on our, our bylaw, which just, just for the benefit of the audience, I will read that it states that windmills as, as defined are not allowed in any zoning district either by right or special permit, except as may be allowed pursuant to exemptions specified under section three of 48 general laws, and those exceptions are agricultural, nonprofits, educational, and religious. Discussion. Any comments on our, our bylaw? If hearing none, I'll entertain a motion that we recommend our bylaw, I mean, this as printed.
I move that we recommend the windmill prohibition bylaw as printed to town meeting.
Second?
I just want to ask for a procedural issue for it from, in a moment.
Yeah, because we may want to, we, we may end up IP-ing it if, if our first one is approved.
So it says recommended.
Did I have a second?
A second, yeah.
Second, okay, now further, further discussion.
So your recommendation be, should be as printed in the warrant, the special town warrant.
Right.
But because it's contingent on the postponement of article, whatever it is in the end. So yes, your, your motion is a positive motion based on the outcome of the previous town, you know, article town.
Understand, okay, so.
So.
That's, that's fine.
You don't have two standing yeses.
Understand, so, Pat, Pat, would you withdraw your motion and restate, restate it?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, then I move that we give a positive recommendation to town meeting for the windmill prohibition article based upon, contingent upon the prior article in the regular town meeting. Fail. Thank you.
Okay, anybody understands that? Okay. Okay, no, all right. Thank you, Mr. Curry, for making, suggesting that change.
And vice versa.
Pardon?
And vice versa, your, your recommendation should the wind energy system bylaw at the end will pass.
This goes.
Is indefinite.
Right.
So it's all wrapped into one motion.
Okay.
Okay.
And that will all be printed in the warrant? Okay.
As an explanation.
Good.
So would you, Pat, would you just add that?
And so I will add on, vice versa, if the bylaw in the regular town meeting passes, then this will be indefinite, then our recommendation will be indefinite postponement.
Okay, now, I'll take it, another second on that. Okay, now, further discussion, everybody got that? Yes, Paul?
If, for the reason that we don't complete the article for the bylaw, and we then take up the next night, the special town meeting, it's going to put us in a very awkward position because then they'll be voting on this particular one without knowing the results of the first one.
That, that, that's true. Come up first, so it'll be a really long night if we don't get it.
Well, our planning, the zoning articles are the.
Right up front.
The first thing on the agenda after committee reports, I believe, aren't they?
Yeah.
Pretty, far up there, like, three or four.
Three, usually.
Yeah, the number three. So the chances of that happening are so remote that I think we'd have to, we could deal with it with some kind of a motion on the floor at that time.
We could deal with it at that time to the moderator.
Right.
The rest of management here is, I think, we're, we're pretty.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we're safe. Further comments?
Yeah, when.
Yes.
As raised by Jim earlier, we have to make a concerted effort at the precinct meetings to explain this.
Right.
So I think that's going to be an important element here.
Absolutely.
Jim raised that earlier.
Yeah, absolutely. And we'll need to ask both Rich and Bob to, to do that also. Further discussion, yes, Mr. Curry?
Just for the board's consideration, the other option you have procedurally is to simply give your recommendation on town meeting floor. If nothing is printed in the warrant, then your explanation will be the board's motion is dependent on the outcome of article three.
Maybe that would be easier?
Easier, but not better.
No?
Yeah, because of the way it is, Jim's concern is answered right there in the recommendation.
Yeah, and if, if it's printed, then, if it's printed, and then the town meeting members will have it in advance.
Yeah, that's important.
And not have to wait for town meeting.
Exactly.
Okay, so, further discussion. All those in favor of Pat's motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the marijuana treatment center bylaw. I have that somewhere. Here it is. The marijuana treatment center bylaw is our article again. We received no, no public comments for the placing the moratorium on the, on the marijuana treatment center until, until we received further guidance from the state. We received no public comments from it. Is there any personal discussion on it? I need a motion then that we recommend, I mean, yeah, we recommend the, this article as printed.
I move that we recommend this article to town meeting as printed.
Do I have a second? Second, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries. The final item on the agenda is the.
56 Scranton Avenue zoning change.
You have to recuse yourself.
I am recusing myself on this one.
Okay, all right, okay. This is the article concerning the zoning change on 56 Scranton Avenue.
I'm a commercial real estate broker, and I represent this client, so I have to recuse myself.
Okay, thank you, Jim. We, this article was presented by Mr. Amet, Attorney Amet, and it involves the rezoning of a, the property located at 56.
Scranton.
Why can't I find it?
56 Scranton.
56 Scranton Avenue. Do I have a copy of that? I don't think I do. This one?
It's right here.
Article.
Last paragraph.
I'm sorry?
Last paragraph.
Yeah, right. See if the town will vote to amend official zoning map from, from what? It doesn't say.
It's Marine District.
Marine District.
We want out.
I know, it's from the Marine.
Marine District to Business Redevelopment District.
Oh, I'm sorry, there it is, rezoning from, from Marine District to Business Redevelopment District. Okay. And I don't recall any testimony from that, from that hearing, does anyone, did Doug do it?
Well, the testimony was that they're the only people in the area that are not actually waterfront, and their use is not specifically marine, and they want the freedom to develop their business into other areas.
Right. I think that was from the applicant, but not from the public.
Oh, right.
Yes.
No public comment.
Right. Okay, discussion on this article.
Paul?
I looked at that, there is no access to the, to the harbor, so I'm in favor of passing this the way it is.
Okay. Any other comments?
Doug?
Just the only thing I would say is, is there anything that we should be considering giving business redevelopment there that would be a negative? Business redevelopment, I thought was more for centers and Main Street, so I don't know if it's really appropriate for that, but if it's not hurting anything, I guess I'm okay with it, it seems more like it, maybe it should be a B2, and I guess we should, I should have asked more questions at the time, why business redevelopment rather than, you know, B2 or B3.
As I recall, it was, wasn't redevelopment more restrictive than those? Wasn't it? So I believe that the, the applicant is asking for something that's more restrictive than B, business districts.
Okay, well then.
So they're, they're sort of like imposing those restrictions on themselves.
Right. Okay, then I guess if that's the case, then I'm fine with it.
Pat?
One of the purposes of business redevelopment was to get a real mixed use and a community flavor, and trying to encourage living above businesses, so you had a real mixture in there. I'm just looking, you were on the planning board when we did a walkthrough, but the two of you weren't. We did a walkthrough of that whole area there, and the planning board at the time didn't really want to see substantive changes to that whole waterfront area. We wanted to see broadened sidewalks, better lighting, more seating for the public, but that's the whole kind of thing that we were looking at with business redevelopment too, is to do this more pedestrian-friendly, to some degree, more intensive use, but more of a planned use. So I think that this would be in line with what we were contemplating for that area, for any kind of rezoning redevelopment in that area.
Could you remind me, is there some sort of greater latitude for the height? Is there an exception to the height requirement?
I don't believe so.
It's all still the same?
Mm-hmm, still the very same.
Okay.
Right.
All right, well, I guess I'm okay.
And the other thing, we wanted to make, to keep it a low profile along there too, because we wanted that whole waterfront open for pedestrian traffic and not seeing high rise there and right up against the water. We really wanted to have this a, a community place, and that was one of the reasons for the business redevelopment downtown too.
Any other comments? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion that we will vote, we will vote to, that we vote to approve, approve this article for rezoning as printed.
Seven.
Can I have a second?
A second.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstained. The motion carries. Yeah, sorry, I must have one in my pack.
It's down there, but it's buried.
Okay. Paul, would, would you ask Jim to come back out?
Oh, hang on, thank you, Bob.
Big crowd tonight.
I'm sorry?
Big crowd tonight.
Yeah, well, there were some people here, but.
I was here last night till after 11 o'clock.
Yeah, but they didn't have the opportunity to speak, so they could only listen. We have, the next item on the agenda is special permit tutorial. We have, this is being offered by Mr. Curry, because this upcoming, the potential upcoming application of Mammoth Acquisition concerning the CBS Pharmacy and the bank will also require a special permit, and since some of the members on the planning board have limited, if any, experience in issuing special permits, Mr. Curry is going, is going to give us some background and help in, in getting through that. There are two members missing tonight from our planning board, and I'm going to ask the planning board to accept my decision that we defer this training until next week. I, I, I think it's appropriate for everybody, and there's no guarantee that everyone will be here next week, but I'm hoping that they will be. Is there anybody who's currently here that doesn't think they can make next week's meeting? Okay, so then, Mr. Leary is ill, I'm assuming that he will be okay by then, and Mr. Latimer, we will just encourage him to make sure he's here. So with that, I thank you, Mr. Curry, for your offer, and I'm, I'm going to say that we're going to bypass the special permit tutorial. Pat?
May I suggest that we pass all of these to Brian so that they don't have to recopy them for next week because we could get, bring them in for that stuff?
Okay, I'll give you my, I'll give mine.
Just leave them in your brown packets.
He handed them out, are there any?
I said we just leave them in our brown packets.
Your brown packets, and we really do that next week?
Okay, leave it in, leave it in your brown packet, unless you want to take it home and promise to bring it next week. Okay. The last item on the agenda, no, I'm sorry, the next item on the agenda is the precinct meeting calendar. I'll start out by saying that I, precinct eight and nine meet at the same time in the same place, so I will cover those, and Bob Leary has helped me in the past, so eight and nine are already covered. Now, what precinct meetings do each of you feel comfortable in attending?
Three.
Doug? Three?
I tend to.
I'm in nine now, so.
You're in nine, so, you, oh, you might want to come to that with two.
I used to live in three.
Yeah, I know, right, okay, all right.
Richard and I are one and two, but he, you're, Paul's a two too, so there's three of us that are, are one and two that go together.
Okay, so then we need, we need one of you guys, at least one of you to split up and take something else.
I do five and six, I've been doing that for years.
Pat's going to do five and six. Are you in those, or?
No.
No.
But I've just been doing those for years because there are a lot of us that have to do with one and two.
Okay, so we need somebody to cover precinct four, one of the three of you to cover precinct four. If one of you would commit to doing that tonight, then we've got it covered.
I can, I used to represent precinct four when I lived there.
This is Rich.
I can do four, and then I'll just skip nine, I guess.
Who else is doing that?
Well, he's going to do that.
Well, I'm going to do nine, and Bob, and Bob Leary usually does, does mine.
We'll go together, Doug, how's that? For four, I'll go there too.
Sounds good.
Okay, for four, we will have Doug and Jim.
And in one and two, we'll have three of us there.
If you want to go.
Well, I want to go because it's my precinct.
Okay, Rich, so, so Rich and Paul and Jim. Okay, Rich, so, so Rich and Paul and Jim?
Yep.
Okay, I, I, are you writing it down too, Brian? Okay, great, so let's just review it, we got one and two covered by Rich, Paul, and Jim, number three, Doug alone, four, Doug and Jim, five, Pat is alone, seven, oh, we didn't do seven, that's my, I overs, I overshot that one, we don't have anybody doing seven. I'm doing eight and nine, so seven is open.
Last time I did seven, so I'll
You did?
Yeah.
That's what, that's a long ways from where you live, isn't it?
Yeah, but I ran out there too and he was already there, so we really, we did, we covered them all last, I was stopping in at all of them as a backup, but they were well-covered.
All right, Paul, if you'll do that, that'll be great. Thank you. So we now have them all covered, Paul doing seven and, and myself and Bob Leary doing eight and nine. Eight and, eight, let's see, one and two are, one and two meet at the same time, eight and nine meet at the same time, and all the rest are individually, right?
Five and six.
No, five and, five and six, I mean, that's, we had two people with five and six.
It's okay, don't worry about it.
You're, you're all right with it?
I'm fine.
She can take them.
Okay. We throw our seasoned member at the house, okay, okay, we've got that covered. The next item on the agenda is releases, there are none. The next item on the agenda after that is committee reports, are there any committee reports? Okay, none. New business, something you might want to see on a future agenda? Probably nothing until we get through town meeting, right? Yeah, okay, and correspondence?
There is none.
There is none. I will then entertain a meeting, a motion for adjournment.
Seven.
Second?